Goodbye, sir. Using positive. It's it's a security thing. But it makes it, uh, sometimes they'll go in and try to cash our check when I'm getting phone calls and I get all the [applause]. Would you like to, uh, call the meeting to order, uh, roll call please, Shannon?
Emma.
Here.
Eleonia.
Here.
Kenesha.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Levonia. Mount Morse. From Danville.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage. Sparta.
Yeah.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
Here. Like to ask Nunde Supervisor Mary Lee Walker to please read us some of the part of this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the, uh, the meeting minutes on draft form from our last regular meeting, the eighth of October. Does anyone have any changes they wish to bring forward? Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second for their approval.
Ask for a motion.
For a second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Right.
I oppose. Carried, uh, we do have, uh, a communication, Shannon?
Receipt of notification from the villages of Avon, Caledonia, Geneseo, Lester, Lima, Mount Morse, and Nunde requesting the county treasurer collect delinquent village taxes for the year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, abstract claims?
Mr. Chairman, move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp, are there any questions or concerns on this set of claims against the county? Hearing none on the roll, please, Shannon?
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Kenesha.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia. Mount Morse. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-six twelve, absent four forty-two, carried.
We do have a request for privilege of the floor this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I ask privilege of the floor for David Terry, our Veterans Service Agency Director.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, to start off, you will see on your desk in front of you, um, there is a new resource guide that just came out, hot off the press, I received this this morning. Uh, this is actually from the American Red Cross, uh, which is one of the veterans committees that I do serve on, uh, for the Finger Lakes region. Uh, but this is the Allegheny and Livingston County Military Resource Guide, so there is a lot of point of contacts for veteran services, uh, that can be utilized. Uh, so I put one on your desk so you can take one of those to your offices, maybe the clerk's office or something like that, that they could have as a resource. With that said, there are a lot of things in here, however, if you do have a veteran's need, I please ask to contact our office, uh, so we we can try to help, uh, with whatever avenues that we can go, uh, in helping the veterans. So, I don't want you to think just because you have this, you have to outreach somewhere else to do something, but we can make those connections, so I would great that, uh, greatly appreciate the support in that regard. So I'm gonna talk about a few things today regarding the Veterans Office for this past year. Uh, first and foremost, uh, what we have done in two thousand twenty-five. Uh, Darren Hamilton in the back corner, my deputy director, uh, filled that position, he was my previous veteran service officer, so we were able to do that. Uh, Ashley Buckley, my veteran service officer, uh, in two thousand twenty-four, we were the first county office to offer a trainee position for veteran service officer. Uh, she did her one-year period as a trainee, uh, and became a full-pledged veteran service officer in May of this year. Um, it was been very successful in the aspect of how she receives training, um, and it really made counties look at how veteran service officers get their training. Um, and I believe there are three other counties now that have either in the process or have started the process of doing veteran service officer trainings, uh, which I think is, uh, pretty awesome. Uh, I do have a vacant position, not filled at this moment, but I can hire another veteran service officer trainee, um, and then my office would be fully staffed. The future and directions of my office, I think that position would need to be filled eventually, but at this moment I can hold off on that, um, for the way things are running and flowing in our office today. Uh, to date, um, this is my knock-on-wood moment, I did this last year as well, but to date, uh, zero in the burials for veterans this year, so I haven't had to process any or get reimbursements from the state, uh, for that this year. And please, as I talk about a few things, if you do have any questions at any time, please stop, please stop me, and don't hesitate to ask questions. Uh, in my office, what I'm doing, uh, is I've compared numbers to where we're at now, compared to where we were at this time in two thousand twenty-four. So, federal claims, we have processed two hundred and fifty-seven claims to date. Last year at this point in time, we're at two forty-seven, it's only ten more, uh, where we were at. Three hundred and ten appointments at this time, um, but three hundred and thirty-four appointments by this time of two thousand twenty-four. And I wanted to take a moment and just talk about those two categories briefly. Claims are up just a little bit, we're up by ten claims, so I consider that pretty equal. Um, appointments are down, and I think that's kind of a good thing in the aspect. What we have really been focusing on in the office is really maintaining appointments where we can get things accomplished, getting veterans prepared before they come to an appointment, so we don't have to have multiple appointments, so the same veteran coming in has to come in three or four times because they forgot to bring something. We have been very successful at that, and we've been able to narrow that down and bring that down in the office to where I I think we're at a good standstill in how we're serving veterans. A lot of that has to do with our Dwyer program and our outreach, where we can prepare veterans, and I'll talk about that as well in just a moment. Uh, and when we're doing outreach to veterans, we're preparing them ahead of time when we're doing, uh, services in the community and letting them know what needs to be brought into appointments and things like that. To date, uh, as far as events that we've hosted this year, we have done eighty-four engaged events to date, uh, in Livingston County. By this time last year in two thousand twenty-four, we did sixty-three. So, in comparison to two thousand twenty-four, we had seven hundred and thirty-eight veteran attendees, two hundred and seventy-five family members in two thousand twenty-four. We have already reached over a thousand veterans this year in public engaging, where we had one thousand forty-two veterans and then we had five hundred and seventy-two, uh, family members. Some of the events that we do for veterans, we categorize them. We have veteran-only events, veteran-plus-one events, where they can bring a significant other or or a caregiver or anybody, they can bring one person, and then we have veteran-family events. So those are the categories in that. Uh, just recently, we had the Vietnam Veteran Memorial Wall in Geneseo. Um, rough guesstimation, but I would not be surprised or inclined, uh, to say about three thousand veterans came to that moving wall, uh, and we had about fifteen hundred family members, that's not even including what I would consider just community members that weren't connected to veterans. Uh, I think it was a very powerful event, and I'm gonna talk about a couple of things as well regarding that in just a moment. So to date, our contact in our office, uh, with veterans, uh, is about five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven contacts that we've had in the community so far to date this year, sitting just over four thousand by this time in two thousand twenty-four. The average is up to about twenty-two contacts per day. One of the reasons why I put in that category twenty-two a day, that's that's very powerful in the veteran community because it's an average of twenty-two veterans that take their lives each day. Right now, we are in Operation Greenlight. Uh, we are in the fifth anniversary of Operation Greenlight, this is our fifth year doing that, and I wanted to talk to you about a couple of impacts of Operation Greenlight, just in case you are not aware of it. First and foremost, uh, the, one of the biggest impacts, uh, happened at a national level. As you know, when you start things, it gets bigger and bigger, and maybe sometimes the mission changes or the objective changes. But when we created this five years ago, I would never anticipate one where Operation Greenlight is today and some of the changes that it has created in the country, coming out of Mount Morris, New York. I just, I just always feel honored and blessed to be in the position that I'm I'm in. So on January second of this year, they passed the Elizabeth Dole Act, and the Dole Act is all about veteran services. And part of the Dole Act that came out of it sparked from Operation Greenlight. And I'm not sure if you are aware, but that created federal funding for rural counties across the country that can't afford to hire or maintain a veteran service officer to have funding to do so. Ironically enough, this is something that we helped lead to, but we are in a very healthy state. I cannot use the Elizabeth Dole Act to hire somebody in my office because we are a healthy office, uh, much enlarged to your support. Uh, so those rural counties across the country that now can get representation for veteran services, not every state is the same, New York State, we're mandated to have a veteran service officer. It's a law in New York State for the county to have a veteran service officer. Not every state has that law. Uh, and so be able to have federal funding, to be able to provide that support is a huge change, and it's an honor to be a part of that and knowing that that started here. So we are in the middle of Operation Greenlight, we started, uh, October eighth, uh, going through the end of veterans a day of this this year, one through eleven, uh, twelve. Uh, my question to you, uh, for each o- office, uh, for each town, uh, just the self-appointed question, do you have a green light in you and on your town office? If you don't know, check. If you don't have one, I highly recommend putting one out there. I highly encourage you getting one out there. Uh, so take a look, ask yourself that, ask your staff if they have a green light, put that in there. The support goes a long ways. If we see that in your town offices, and we see that either at their public works office, different departments, if we see that throughout the county, you will get participation in the community. And I can honestly, I'm standing here before you saying, it has sparked conversations and it has sparked change in some lives, uh, and it's something to be very, very proud of. Nationwide, this is going from November fourth through the eleventh, so the week of Veterans Day, that's when Operation Greenlight goes beyond our county. Uh, you're seeing that, uh, across the board, uh, on social media, uh, but this is our chance to shine before the week of Veterans Day because we can publicize the greenlights in Livingston County to the rest of the nation and show them the differences in what we're doing in sparking the conversation for veterans benefits. So initiatives, um, and social media, these are the top three things that we're doing, uh, that have, that we have participated in this year. Our number one, uh, social media post, and I wanna give a shout-out to Travis Clark, uh, in the back, uh, for doing the public affairs for the county, um, who does an incredible job covering our events, um, and sending out our notifications. But our car show that we did this year has got over twenty-one thousand views on social media, three hundred and fifty-nine interactions, whether it's a share, a like, uh, but those things go a long way, uh, in getting notifications out there. Operation Greenlight, just sending out our general notification of us starting Operation Greenlight in Livingston County got over eleven thousand views, two hundred and seventy interactions. And then I use this as a prime example, our event postings that we do on on our Facebook page through the county and all the social media platforms. So this one here, uh, is two days old, so yesterday, by end of business day yesterday, after one day of being posted, it had seven thousand four hundred and ninety-three views, fifty-seven interactions. I'm sure that number's higher today because we're now on day two after that post. Uh, but that just shows the amazing job that Travis does for the county, um, and what he does for veteran services and all the different posts that he does for for all the different departments. Uh, but I just wanted to to shine a, a quick green light on this, um, put a gre- little green light on this, I mean, just to recognize what's being done, uh, in the aspect of social media. Uh, I wanna talk briefly about our Dwyer program. Uh, the Joseph P. Dwyer program that is in every county, once again, uh, is now in every county because of Livingston County, uh, being on the forefront, making that available to every county. Uh, but they did a survey this year, uh, asking the counties to participate, and every county was asked to request this, uh, survey being done. This was through the School of Social Welfare with the University of Albany, uh, and I wanted to mention Livingston County briefly because it really shines on our Dwyer program. Uh, most counties, uh, they averaged twenty-five to fifty responses. Uh, we had a hundred and thirty-seven responses out of Livingston County. This shows the veterans really care about what we're doing. We had one of the highest, we're one of the three highest responses in New York State to this, uh, data that I'm gonna be speaking to you about in just a second here. Uh, but out of that hundred and thirty-seven responses, we were the highest for a rural county. And, uh, you can see just on here, and I'm gonna talk here just a second, on the satisfaction rates of veterans talking about our programs. Uh, out of the survey, things that have been mentioned were camaraderie and fellowship. Veterans consistently emphasize on their, uh, evaluations on what we're doing in Livingston County. Many of them use the words camaraderie and fellowship to describe their experience here in Livingston County. Other aspects of appreciation was social connection, meeting new people, building friendships, and getting together with others was frequently mentioned, uh, on almost every survey that came in to New York State, uh, to the school. Also, opportunities for service, the participants valued the chance to support other veterans in need, and that is the whole purpose of what we do with the Dwyer program. It is peer support, it's taking away the non-clinical aspect, and it's bringing veterans together to start the conversations, and when we can identify veterans in need, we can provide the services required to move forward. We have been very, very successful in that in Livingston County. A shared purpose, participants reported the program fostering a sense of unity and a shared mission among participants and staff. Also, they talked about support and resources. Numerous respondents believed the program provided valuable resources and support tailored to their needs, including assistance with community and family resources. Um, and it was one of the most impactful, uh, of the surveys that came out, uh, of of what they mentioned of what we're doing here in Livingston County. And I can say it as well, beyond just what we do with our Dwyer program, I have been to other several counties talking, uh, along with Bob, uh, in my office, who runs our Dwyer program. Uh, we talked about how we do it, why we do it, and we have several counties that are modeling what we're doing, um, and how we do things and and how impactful we're being. Out of the hundred and thirty-seven individual responses, seventy-five percent of the respondents were male, twenty-three percents were female, and now in today's world, two percent were either unknown or preferred not to say. Uh, the participant ages during the survey, ten percent were the ages of thirty-five to fifty-four. Forty-eight percent of the survey recipients were fifty-five to seventy-four age range, and over forty percent was over seventy-five years old during that survey. I had point eight, so just, uh, I probably, A responded, there was between the ages of eighteen and thirty-four. Wanted to share that data because it really shows the veteran community that we're serving, uh, because we really do have a older population of veterans in Livingston County. So we try to tailor what we do in events, one, to what veterans wanna do, uh, but we try to make those connections, uh, to meet their needs. Ninety-seven percent of participants were satisfied with the program. Ninety-five percent of the participants were comfortable discussing their needs with our staff, with Bob or myself or any other peer that we have at our events. Ninety-eight percent of participants felt welcomed at the program, and we had another ninety-eight percent of participants feeling a sense of camaraderie, connection, and other veterans as a result of the, connecting with other veterans as a result, uh, of our program. As you see on the board in front of you, uh, these are participant quotes that were up, uh, in the survey. These are actual, they they had a section of the survey that were just for comments and open conversation, and I wanted to to read a couple of them, I know they're probably hard to read up there if you have eyes like mine. Uh, but I wanna read a couple of quotes that veterans have said, and these are word for word from our participants. Number one, it's a safe space where vets truly understand, listen, and walk with each other through healing. Two, being able to meet with other veterans who are dealing with the same problems I am. Three, what I like most about the PFC Dwyer Peer Support Program is the genuine brotherhood. And the last thing, uh, of these, of the four quotes up there, I wanna read one that's almost dead smack in the middle towards the bottom there. They bring the veterans together, speaking of our office, in settings that are conducive to finding support, and that's what we want this to be all about. Uh, so far to date, we are going on almost year two now. Livingston County used to be, in the past, the highest rate of veteran suicide in the state of New York per capita. And it's something I'm not proud to say of, but it's something that we've been very working hard towards alleviating veteran suicide, of the suicides that we've had in Livingston County today and would, we have no veterans. Every suicide in Livingston County is one too many. Uh, we want to alleviate suicide altogether, uh, but we haven't had any veteran suicide this year, and I think that's a really strong commitment, uh, regarding the programming and stuff that we're doing to bring veterans together, getting them talking and getting them connected to resources. So I wanted to mention that as well. Couple other things that I just wanna talk about before I conclude here. Uh, if you're not aware, uh, this year, uh, every year the DNC out of, out of Batavia and the Livingston County News, out of Geneseo, um, do a best-of-the-best recognition, whether you can get your best burger, your best beer, best food, best auto mechanic. They had to add a new category this year because somebody nominated our county for best veteran services. They've never had a public-facing veteran agency be recognized for their service, and it has. So, uh, we won this year, uh, in this category. Um, I had the, you know, when they first told me that we were being nominated for it, jokingly, uh, I said, hey, we could really push this out to be voted, uh, on this, and then I, when the results came out of who you're running against, uh, we were running unanimously. So we got this recognition, but I wanna say, uh, even though we didn't really run against any other veteran service office, uh, it's a huge honor to, one, to be honored, uh, but to have over a hundred veterans go and vote for us to say, hey, this is a great honor for Livingston County in recognizing the services that are that our veteran service office is doing. So what I'm gonna ask of you, uh, is I hope you can mark on your calendar, on February twentieth of two thousand twenty-six, it's a Friday night, uh, I don't know if you are aware, but one of the programs that we do is we host a hockey game at SUNY Geneseo. Um, and when SUNY Brockport comes to Geneseo, and that's the home game here in Geneseo, that's our veteran appreciation night. Uh, so this year's theme, we're doing in February one, honoring two hundred and fifty years of America, but I'm gonna be honoring, uh, my my staff out of my office, um, at this game this year, uh, for their services, and we're gonna be pushing out the the best of the best in the glow region. Uh, so I wanna give them that and that recognition, uh, at the game this year. Um, this is our bronze boots game, I think most of you do know what this is, but if you don't know, uh, this is the trophy that they fight for for the game, it is huge, it pretty much goes up to my waist. Um, as you see that trophy, those are my combat boots that were bronzed, and my two daughters' hockey sticks. One's a lefty, one's a righty, uh, so we, uh, bronzed their hockey sticks, and we made this trophy so not only can the kids be honored, uh, in the college to fight for this every year, um, and and hold it annually at their school between Geneseo and Brockport, uh, not only do they have the excitement to fight for something, but the veterans that come out to our dinner that we put on before the game, uh, get to see this trophy, get their picture with it, and they just, you know, they were just blown away last year when they saw this. So this is something that gets veterans excited for, and this is one of the events that we do. So they come out here and we give them a free dinner, and then we give them free access to the hockey game. Uh, so entertainment with the family and just have a break bread with the veterans and have a good time together, and that's one of the events that we do. Uh, so that's one thing that I'm very proud of. So come on out to our bronze boots game, uh, and see our staff get honored in one of the intermissions. And before I conclude, I just wanna talk briefly on a couple of things that we've done this year, and then I'm, and then I'm going to end here, so I appreciate your time. Uh, one, in May of this year, we did the Veterans Tranquil Trail. Uh, that tranquil trail in Al Laren's Park is one of the only trails like it in the state of New York. That is the mindfulness trail focused for veterans. Um, it has taken off, I've been pretty excited by the number of people that are using the trail. Uh, it's been pretty exciting, uh, when I first, uh, put it out there, we we printed out like five hundred flyers of the trail where they can do audio, uh, of the trail itself. Um, not even advertising that it's out there, I put these in the kiosks so people can look at videos of the signs that they can do, um, and I have to keep filling it, so I know it's getting used because these are getting removed. Uh, I'm down to three of these left in my office, uh, in addition to whatever what's left in the park right now that I filled a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so I know the trail's getting used. I had one veteran who's a hundred percent service-connected, disabled veteran contact my office, um, and they came in, out of our county, they came and explored this trail, um, and called us to appreciate and said this trail is something that they needed. Um, and their property goes to the end of the Greenway Trail towards Buffalo, and they're already in talks with New York State to get a grant that that trail can be extended on their property because they wanna do a mindfulness trail for veterans, for law enforcement, firefighters, emergency services, and ambulance crew, and that's a vision that they have now that they wanna do on their property, um, just because they came and seen what we did on the trail. So if you haven't walked it, uh, I highly recommend it, uh, and take your family on that trail as well. One of the exciting trips that we took this year, uh, with our veterans, is we actually rented two vans, Darren drove one van, Bob drove the other, um, and they escorted veterans to Gettysburg this year. Um, and we did a, uh, Gettysburg weekend, uh, because we wanted to do the General Wadsworth Trail, uh, and then we, in celebration of two hundred and fifty years of America, in turn, when we brought them home, we finished a couple of weeks later by doing a picnic at the Boyd and Parker Park, the Ambuscade, uh, picnic. Uh, and we had our county historian give a presentation there, and that was one of the highly, uh, sought-out programs that we did this year with the veterans program, so it went really, really well, successful. We may be doing that again next year. We had the moving wall come into Geneseo, uh, my office did not do the moving wall, this was from John Snyder and the, uh, Warplane Museum that put it on, uh, but it was very, very successful. Uh, and it was very humbling and an awesome experience. Uh, right after we did that, uh, the following week, I was able to participate on the Honor Flight. Uh, so I was on Mission Ninety-two as a guardian, um, on the Honor Flight, and I could talk to you hours about that as well, but I'm not gonna do that today. Um, and then just a couple of weeks ago, uh, we did our camping trip with veterans in Letchworth State Park. Um, that is always something that is just absolutely incredible, the bonding experience around the fireplace for the entire weekend, um, is just absolutely incredible, um, and the individuals that were there, uh, was was just amazing, and it was a great time. So that's what we're doing, that's where the direction of my office is going to be heading, uh, and what we're doing and facing with veterans, um, and I wanted to leave you with that, uh, in that aspect. One more thing I do wanna say, uh, and I'm gonna end with this, uh, out of Sparta, we had a recent veteran that passed away, uh, Paul Phillips, uh, and his wife Pat. Um, they wanted to, uh, because of our services that we provided their family, um, and because of the benefits that he got through our office, they wanted to give back. So at his funeral or in his obituary, um, he said, in lieu of flowers, can you make a donation to Livingston County Veteran Services? Um, and I wanted to report to you, and, uh, he passed away on the seventh, uh, of September, um, and we've received over two thousand dollars so far, uh, in in his honor, uh, to our office. So I wanna end with you on that and to show you the great things that we're doing, uh, here in Livingston County. So thank you for your time, unless you have any questions.
David, I, I just have a comment and and one question. I just wanna thank you, your staff, and everyone in in that is in that office, everything that you have done and your team, it's been amazing, and I've seen a lot. Oh, thank you for that. And one of, and I think you did, I I may have missed it, uh, that you failed to mention, that was very, very successful from your folk, from your, uh, putting on events, was, uh, the boat rides, uh, on Kenesha's Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it was a very, very, and I get a lot of comments, you know, being on Kenesha's Lake.
Yeah, so the Kenesha's Lake.
It was a wonderful program.
Yeah, so the pontoon boat rides are not from my office.
They're not?
So that is the Canisius Lake Boating Association that puts those on. However, we do support them, and what we do is we provide the meals for them.
Okay.
So we go, yeah.
Oh, you're involved?
So we do go, but I don't organize them, I don't structure them, but it is very successful. It used to be one pontoon boat ride that we would do. But now what they do is we get a group of veterans, they will fill a pontoon boat, a pontoon boat, they go out for their two-hour ride, they come back if they're not on the SS Minnow, and when they come back, we feed them, and that's what we do out of our office. We provide the food, and then the next group goes out after lunch, and they do it again for another group of veterans. They get about thirty veterans at a time, and it is highly sought out, but it is something we work correlation with them. I just want to give them the credit.
Yeah, well, but you're highly involved in that, so thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
The other thing, I do have a little bit of a question, or maybe I misunderstood. At the beginning of your presentation, you said you have one vacant position?
Yes.
And I sensed a little bit of reservation there of you wanting to fill that, and is there a reason that you want to take your time and, you know?
Well, the reason is I could fill it now.
Right.
I could use the resource, but we're managing the office right now with the staff that we have and being financially, fiscally responsible. I'm okay. But the direction of where we're heading and what we're doing, as the Dwyer program grows, I do want to fill it in two thousand twenty-six.
Right.
I just wasn't pushing on doing it today, like right now. I want to get through this year and see where we're moving forward. But with that said, our Dwyer program is growing, and I can honestly say Bob Walter gives two hundred percent into the Dwyer program of Livingston County, and we are getting to the point, he can't do it by himself as we grow. Even my participation has been a lot more than usual this year as we're growing in events. So I've been away a lot of weekends from my home this year just for doing events and stuff of that nature, but it is growing. But the direction that we're heading and how, where I see my office in the future, I would need that person for us to be successful. And why I mean by having another person in the office, because that would give us two veteran service officers, Darren as my deputy kind of running the office, and then even though I oversee the office, I have other tasks as well that I didn't even mention about today just because of time. I've taken a lot of your time, so I appreciate it. But being, most of you, I don't know if any of you know, but I'm also the president of the New York State Veteran Association. I took that over this year.
You do know, yes.
And I'm rebuilding that from scratch, and I just had a meeting on that this week. So those are other tasks that I'm doing on top of my normal responsibilities. But I want to be able to have another veteran service officer in the office so we can have somebody associated to do home visits, direct care to our nursing home. We have over thirty veterans in our county nursing home right now. I think it's one of the highest that we've had of veteran population in the nursing home. The car show that I mentioned that we did earlier, we had that at the nursing home so we could honor the veterans that were in there. And so that car show that we did was very successful. We are moving that car show, by the way, if I could spare a couple of seconds. The car show we are doing next year, because it was so successful this year, it's going to be July third, and the things that we have planned to count down two hundred and fifty years of America, we're going to end it to that car show at our Poppy Monument on July third next year. We're going to do it in the morning so it doesn't conflict with Ring of Fire that will probably be happening on the lake. I believe that will probably be the same day, I think that's a Saturday, that we'll be doing that. But we have some things in store that we'll be announcing in the very near future, celebrating two hundred and fifty years of America, so that's coming up too.
So then I take, you have taken steps to start looking for that new?
Correct.
In two thousand twenty-six?
Yes, I do have steps in place that I'm trying to follow, just trying to possibly fiscally responsible and not get ahead of myself.
I understand that, but thank you and, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We do have two resolutions on the prepared agenda.
Appointing members to the Workplace Violence Prevention Committee, Phyllis Apelin and Anthony Jarzina, providing for public hearing on proposed Livingston County budget for two thousand twenty-six pursuant to Section three fifty-nine of the New York State County law.
Is there any discussion on either of these two resolutions? If there are none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to bring it to a roll call.
Second shifted.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's carried, I'll roll through Shannon.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-six twelve, absent four forty-two, adopted.
We have some resolutions that are going to be required of separate.
Mr. Demming, awarding bid for the Livingston County Planning Department for Livingston County Connect All Municipal Infrastructure Program Service Area One Labor, bid number two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-five, Eternal Technology, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? If there are none, I'll roll through Shannon.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-six twelve, absent four forty-two, adopted. Awarding bid for the Livingston County Planning Department for Livingston County Connect All Municipal Infrastructure Program Service Area Two Labor, bid number two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-six, DDS Hold Company LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on awarding this bid? If there are none, I'll roll through Shannon.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-six twelve, absent four forty-two, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, county administrator and county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? If there are none, I'll roll through Shannon.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-six twelve, absent four forty-two, adopted. Authorizing annual capital project account increases for two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? If there are none, I'll roll through Shannon.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-six twelve, absent four forty-two, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following professional services contract for Livingston County Industrial Appraisal Company.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns or questions on this professional services contract? If there are none, I'll roll through Shannon.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.